Good evening, everyone. Thanks for joining us. Let's go ahead and open with a moment of silence. Looks like most of our members are present. Member Cortez has answered tonight, and my returner is only a couple of minutes late. Can I get a seeking motion and support to approve tonight's agenda? Motion?
Support.
Any questions? On favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries five to zero. It goes us to recognition and correspondence.
We do a couple items. First, you'll notice in your board packet a list of several parented organizations that have made contributions to the district so we can acknowledge and appreciate this evening, some of which, as you'll notice, are individual organizations that contribute to our community night. That would be possible without the generous support of businesses within our community to offset the cost associated with hosting a community night. There's also an extensive list of organizations that contribute to our best Macer. Again, the Macer wouldn't be possible if we wouldn't be able to give back to our student groups that participate, our senior only parented parents who participated and helped us put on the Macer. We'd be able to give back to government proposals for generous donations from many, many organizations throughout the community. And then also, there's a bit of information in there as well for one other event. I'm trying to think of it as well, but quite a list. Yeah, GMBNOK, I want to make sure that we've covered them because they give to not only the Macer but also help us do free cost closure with our back-to-school lunch and put on for all staff. And that we've been doing now for a few years. GMBNOK always shares with their funds to help us do that. So quite a list there. Too many to name off, but you certainly can see that in the board packet. Appreciate their support.
To Jerry, in the past, I think it was John that sent it.
They will get it, yes.
Thank you. We can relate that.
Julie always works with the business office on producing something that the business best to use for tax purposes since they're physical, not physical.
Okay.
And then also the seeming under recognition, we hope to be able to do this on a regular basis, especially when we go as part of our regularly doing this at our buildings. I've asked Dr. Porter to be here, and she's going to make it up regular item on the agenda to recognize some staff members. She has some staff members that she wishes to lift up tonight for their contributions to the district. Dr. Porter?
Come up there and just give a little bit of... Good evening, everybody. All right, so you might have heard that Kennewah Hills was one of thirty-nine districts in all of Michigan to be awarded green funds for the Innovative Literacy Program. When we first heard about this grant, we had several people say to us, please don't apply. They significantly told us, please don't apply. It's very difficult, and we probably would not get it. Liz Greerman said, I accept that challenge, and she worked all summer long. And we just found out, we received the grant, one hundred eighty-seven thousand, two hundred eighty-two dollars to expand our psychological awareness intervention. So I just wanted to recognize Liz and her efforts for scoring us that grant. And it's going to be led by our speech and language pathologist, Lindsay Jones, who's right next to her. So I think we've been working with early intervention with our kindergarten students to make sure, I guess in a big picture, make sure that they don't need intervention later. And I know from being a principal at Central Elementary, it has had a tremendous impact, not only giving them a head start, but also intervening early. Hands down, Lindsay has been doing an amazing job. And I know with Liz's grant, we can continue that work. Not only were we one of a few in Michigan, we were one of a few in West Michigan. And now we are also in the running for additional funding, and we hope that we will continue that award-winning success. So is there anything else I missed? Or is there anything that you guys, who do you want to add? Not putting on the stop sign, but...
No, we're just really excited for like, you know, the opportunities for our youngest nights and to be able to scale this up. Because this state's looking for innovation that can be replicated in other districts. So if it's working really well here in Kennewah, how can they use that same model in other schools to help not really close the literacy app, but actually like, this is really being more proactive instead of reactive in a traditional intervention model. So hoping to catch the kids early, and so there's no need for that intervention later.
In addition, if that wasn't enough, you might want to celebrate Lindsay Jones for being featured on Melissa and Lori Love, Dersie Podcast. I don't know how cool that is, so feel free to ask her for her autographs. Don't let anybody else that's been featured on a podcast. It's a national platform that highlights top literacy experts. She's episode, you want to write this down, two thirty-three. And she shares the work that's happening right here in Kennewah Hills. So very proud of Kennewah Hills, very proud of Lindsay. And she specifically talks about the work we're doing in the kindergarten community awareness intervention program across all three elementary schools. So I thought that was a great way to highlight the work that you're doing, to highlight you, because very few, very often, you know, educators get to be celebrated. And I thought how cool that was to get really cool in a podcast. We didn't have those when I was growing up, so. So congratulations to all of you and Lindsay. I have a quote on my notebook, so moving along to some middle school celebrations. Powerful learning for children requires powerful learning for educators. And in Kennewah Hills, you have the opportunity to move lanes, lane changes, which not only increases your financial gain, but also believe that it directly impacts the students in the classroom. Because I'm sure as many of you guys have heard, teachers are the most decisive factor in the classroom. Without teachers, we don't have students who can grow. So I'd like to recognize three of our middle school teachers that have completed advanced coursework and successfully earned their lane changes. So they're not only investing in themselves, but they're investing in their students. So every new skill that they're able to learn, they're able to bring back to the classroom to help our students grow and succeed. These aren't just any classrooms they take, or any classes that they take. They have to be approved, and they have to be proven to help them in the classroom. So we have Jared Lynn, Jared Minnesota, Jared Lancaster, Molly Einheiss, and Kendra Weeks. All of the middle school were celebrated for getting their lane changes and increasing their knowledge. So they're here? Is that it?
Yeah.
No? Okay. Well, if you see them, please tell them congratulations at the middle school and a job with them. So that's it?
No correspondence tonight, so that goes us to our board communication.
How was that Macer? I volunteered. That was fun?
Thank you.
That was fun. And then homecoming.
Oh, let's see. RC football game, which was great. And I went to see my grandson play fourth grade. Kennewah, that was great. So great week.
Good. I, too, was at the homecoming game, which was amazing. Got to see some awesome plays. And pompo, too, is being a lot of fun. Give my daughter a shout out. She actually got interception, though. So that's pretty cool to see, in our record book anyways. All right. And move along to our discussion and information items. And to start out, we're going to have a spotlight here on the middle school.
First of all, just thank you for the opportunity to come and share some of the stuff that we're doing at the middle school. We're going to talk about teaming, every student every day, MSPG, which you'll know more about when we get there, and then peak moments. So kind of to start off, grade level teams and hallways. We've had tons of great feedback on this so far. Shared students on like half of, half of them are on the goal team and half of them on the block team at sixth, seventh, and eighth grade. We have great little hallways. I know we're going to do a tour kind of later on. But having all the students from one grade kind of in one area where they have their teachers that know them is super beneficial. Lockers and backpacks are all outside of their net classes. And all backpacks and cell phones are in lockers this year, which is amazing. Had tons of great feedback on that from staff and parents. And we've got three amazing students, and some of our staff members are going to share. Abigail's going to kind of read these student quotes about our grade level teams.
I like how this year, every grade level has their own hallway. It's nice because the halls aren't as crowded anymore. It's easier and faster to get to my classes. It's also like, I also like how Kennewah Hills Middle School is a lot more organized than years in the past. I have really been enjoying the way they have added grade level team teaching. I like how there is less hallway congestion, how I get to see more familiar faces, and how it is easier to get to my classes. How we have certain bathrooms and how eight, seven, six graders don't run into each other. What I like about Kennewah Hills Middle School is the new rooms, the classrooms being closer together and...
So that's just a little bit kind of on teaming. So we also have a couple of teachers here in Plains and Lower Roche that are going to talk about every student every day.
Okay, so a couple of things that we do at the middle school on a consistent basis is we have what we call MBCs, which are Moments of Genuine Contact. And so it's really where we spend time finding out about each and every kid in our classroom, and then we transfer that data to our team by communicating with them about information we've learned about kids, that kind of thing. So it can help all of us base note kids on a more personal level.
And one of the things that we figured, use of our teams is with more of us focusing in on the students on our list. If one of us hasn't connected with that student yet, someone else on the team may have. So we can see on our logs if somebody's made a connection or if the student has not made a connection with an adult, and we need to jump in there and make more efforts to do that.
This year, we also started our RTI supports. So we have RTI math, RTI reading, and what we call night shift. And night shift is just some of our low-will students who struggle academically, we try to provide them with an opportunity to have an entrance level into some of the academics and kind of garner some excitement for it.
Yeah, and based on our eye-ready results, we're able to pull reports and see what commonalities our learners have and gaps that may be surfacing. And we can plan support in the classroom to help remediate those gaps. We can do a little bit of pre-teaching in the class to help them get ready for what they're about to see to build that confidence. And we can also do some other activities with them that help them see themselves as a successful math student, or successful reading, or in the case of night shift, you have to...
Awesome. Thank you. So that's a little bit of our RTI supports and kind of how we're trying to connect with all students and meet them where they're at. One thing that we started last January was our MSPG, which is our middle school parent group. I'm just so proud of the work that Jen Breen and all of our parents have done to support our students. She's going to kind of walk you through some of the awesome things that they've done.
So yeah, I'm Jen Breen. I work here at the middle school, and I have three kids that attend the middle school. So when Mr. Dodge suggested that we start a middle school parent group, I'm pretty sure I was the only one for a while that volunteered. But we got it up and running. And so we started in about February, and our main goal was to create an atmosphere of connection and community among middle school families and students and staff. And we do that through fundraising, through supporting our staff and students, and through special student events. So last year, or last school year, we were able to do two restaurant fundraisers, three student donut sales, one student pickle sale, because our students love pickles. I had one student buy pickles for like his whole grade, basically. And then we did a fun coin war battle against the grades. And just between February and June, we raised just over a thousand dollars. And that was really exciting, but what was more exciting than that was just seeing the volunteers come into our meetings every month and want to be involved. And we had representation at conferences, at open house night, at community night, at registration night. And then we also have some members that will be attending the Be in America event on Saturday. And the one thing when we were at every event that we kept hearing from families in the middle school was, this is so awesome. I wanted to be involved, but I didn't know how. At the elementary age and level, you know, you have the PTO groups. At high school, you have the booster group. With middle school, we don't have anything. And one of our hopes of having a group here at the middle school is that we'll get the families involved, and as the kids grow and they advance into the high school, those same families will continue to be involved into the high school. So we've shown support for the staff in different ways. One, by providing dinner at conference nights. We had an amazing staff appreciation week. We did a taco lunch bar, a trail, a make-your-own-trail mix bar. We had donuts and coffee brought in one morning. We don't like showing up to work and having free donuts and coffee. And then we had some fun games. We did a rock, paper, scissors tournament, and all the staff members had to wear like Kennewah Hills heated necklaces. And they had to go up to each other and challenge them to rock, paper, scissors. And if they won, they got to either keep their heated necklace or take it from the other person. And I didn't know that could be such a competitive game. It was fun, fun. And then another thing that we have done and been trying to do is just match what our teachers need with what our volunteers have to offer. We've asked our volunteers, what are you good at? What do you like doing? And we just did a survey with our staff and asked them, if you had a volunteer, what would you have them do in the classroom? And we're trying to match them up. For student focus activities, we helped at the spring dance. We had an eighth grade end of the year celebration and an Irishman social. And I think I've done a lot since eighth grade, had something like that. And I think what we were most proud of was we planned and we pressed and we planned some more, from what I'm being told, was our first ever middle school field day. And we're going to call that Night's Day going forward. And it wasn't your traditional elementary field day. We had age-appropriate activities, things that our middle school students were excited to do. We had things on the football field. We had the music going. We had the video on. We had things on site, the hockey ball, basketball. We had teachers who were doing karaoke with the students. It was just a lot of fun. And at the end of the day, we just got a lot of feedback that staff, you know, students and families really enjoyed that day. And I'm kind of getting emotional because like, kids go here, and just to see these kids be kids and have a good time is really important. And just to have them make core middle school memories was really awesome to see. So looking ahead, we're going to try to do all the same things we did last year. We're also excited because we're able to sponsor the sixth grade students who go to camp. And again, we're just going to continue matching our volunteers with what our staff needs. We have a Griffins game coming up in November, and marketing will come out on social media for that. And I just want to end with, on Friday, we did our first cornhole tournament with our students. And one, I just have to say how proud I was of our students. They all showed such respect to our volunteers and our staff that stayed after, and to the property here at school, and sportsmanship to each other. But also, there's a sixth grade student who I was told doesn't have a lot of friends. He was really shy. He spent his SNAP bar money to sign up for the cornhole tournament, and he didn't have a partner. And we found a partner for him, but that partner ended up not showing up. And one of our seventh grade students came up to the sixth grade student, offered to be his partner. But not only offered to be his partner, he then took him with him to introduce him to all of his friends and bought him a piece of pizza in a pot. And we saw this connection forming. And all of us volunteers, we just looked at that, and we're like, this is a lot of work, but this is why we do this. So we're really excited about what's happening, and we're hoping to just build on the momentum. And if you guys have any questions, you can see Mr. Dodge for himself. Thank you.
This is kind of build on some of the stuff that Jen was talking about with our middle school parent group, but really trying to provide peak moments for our students. Last spring, we did field trips to the Grand Rapids Public Museum, focused around our M-Step testing. And we did that eighth grade celebration, eighth grade STEM Academy, went to, went to the tech showcase for the tech showcases last week. We're doing assemblies. We're trying to do those four times a year. But we're really trying to provide like, like two field trips every year for our students. In fact, I just talked with our seventh grade team. They're going to take them to the John Paul Zoo just before our fall break, like the whole seventh grade. So trying to do something in the fall, do something in the spring, get kids out of the building, get them learning in other spaces. Just great opportunities. Last but not least, we have some amazing things going on here at Kennewah Hills Middle School, but none of this would happen with our amazing staff. They support each other and our students so, so well. And in our student council surveys that Mrs. Haynes put out, she collected some of these quotes. And Blakeley and Jen are going to read some of these student quotes about our staff.
I'm Jen.
I'm Blakeley. And we're going to read these quotes. All the teachers show that they care about you and often ask for your encouragement. I also like my teachers at Kennewah Hills because they are helpful to the kids. They push us to be our best, and they always believe the best. I like that there's always someone to talk to in halls or during class. And I like the how the teachers respect the students that are having a hard time. My teachers are amazing, and I'm so excited to learn this kid. I like all of my friends and teachers. I also like how our staff creates a fun atmosphere for all of the students, like after school activities.
Thank you. So out of the like ninety-ish students that applied for student council, I would say there was at least sixty or seventy of them that like when they said what they liked about Kennewah Hills Middle School, it was of teachers. And it was maybe a little bit shorter than some of those, but we have an amazing staff that puts kids first, and that's what provides, or provides us with the opportunity to do some of these awesome things for kids. So thank you for your time. And if you guys have any questions, please don't hesitate to ask.
I have a question, but I have a statement. I, my fellow board members, have the pleasure of sitting in on one of the middle school parent groups, a small, but mighty group. The time that I sat there, and I just felt the energy was amazing. And your leadership, Jen, was just phenomenal. So thank you for doing what you do.
I follow along the newsletters and watching the events and the things that you get from any other group, and with excitement. That was part of a very strong group, but that tried to do this thing and kind of fizzled out and failed. So it's really nice to see you guys have some successes.
I do everything through this, and everything I would want to help.
You know, my, my kids are gone now from the district, but that's exactly what, what you mentioned about you lose the opportunity to be involved as a parent in middle school. I felt that, having come from robust PTO and helping, and then all of a sudden, you don't have the opportunity to help. But you also, the kids have the bonus of communicating more of those things. And so this is a, I'm really excited for this.
Also add, when we do senior class interviews at the end, we've had several students ask us, why do field trips stop in elementary school? So the high schoolers even see that, you know, but they still want to go out there. And so I think you guys do more, and field trips is a great idea.
Thank you. And thank you, you three, for coming and providing. You might want to do one of them, but we do appreciate you coming.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Now we move along to to our student representative reporter. Jay, do you have something for us today?
Yes. So first, I had a pretty good summer. I worked all summer. And I was also able to go to a life leadership conference this year. I won a conference, conference for the year. So that was great. And I was also offered an internship at Rutgers Sunday next summer. So that's also great. Um, I was able to enjoy the whole homecoming week this week. So that was great. Spirit was really there. Game was fun. Everything was great. Um, I also started a academy to do leadership this year. I'll be in St. Louis another week, so that would be fun this year in November. And also, since it's my second year, I'm going to try and get more mentors this year for the high school to provide better input and have better...
Thank you. Okay, now onto the Department of Teaching and Learning.
So we're turning forward to a second reading of the proposed wellness policy in five, four, and zero. Document including your whole packet highlights proposed addition agreement and removals stripped out in, in the light red and pink color. At our hearing prior to our starting time, we need to find as is required for this particular policy. Just curious if any board members have questions as to what is proposed or for a second.
Bill, I just had one, one thing, and I think the board all got a copy of one of my questions. But under the nondiscrimination portion of this, I noticed in the twenty, I think it was the twenty twenty-one revision, there's, there's absolutely nothing about nondiscrimination. And this time around, there's a sizable paragraph, a couple paragraphs.
The only, the only issue I bring up is the gender identity and sexual orientation. It's not listed under the USDA guidelines for nondiscrimination. So my question is, why are, why are we including that in our packet?
Appreciate your question. Two things that I can offer relative to inclusion, this is language that, or not my language, provided by the committee that did this work, suggested to include. And then when you go to the Michigan Department of Education website, and the Department of Education somewhere, there's a nondiscrimination language. It's mirrored what's in, what's proposed and what's not. So So federal versus state guidance, I think we have discrepancy there, but those are my two comments that concern us.
Yes, my question is if the federal government is funding this, then I would think we should follow their guidelines.
Well, the federal government provides us dollars. We are, we are, the whole means of laws and regulations as well.
So Mark, I, myself and Melissa participated along with Bill and Brooke was there, a parent. It's a pretty robust group. And the way we went through the process was we had a list of all the possible things. And in one section, you could choose to not have the section at all, or there would be three different options that you could choose what aligns with what you're doing in your district. So I, we didn't, we didn't write any of it, to Bill's point. It was all boilerplate. And I think in this perspective, it's, I'm gonna try to get this the right way and I might be backwards. I think it's okay to be less restrictive in your language than another governing body versus more restrictive. If that makes sense. We didn't put, we're not filed, it's like a double negative. I feel like I need a whiteboard to say this. If the guideline is A and we added some things to A, we're still meeting A. We just chose to include some additional facets to it. So if we had gone less than A, then we would be in jeopardy of losing funding or being in a position where we weren't adhering to the guidelines. But when we looked at all of the different options as a group, this is where we landed and this was what we felt was the best approach.
Well, I can appreciate your approach there, but the problem I have, there's two genders. Either male or you're female. So I don't know why we have to go anywhere beyond discrimination of sex, but there's only two genders.
Yeah, you might not necessarily agree with it, but there are children that find themselves in this position. And we took the position that we would never want a child that falls into this category, this grouping, to be discriminated against when it comes to food or health.
I think the thing that I appreciate about the direction that the committee has taken in advocacy today is, you know, a board event is, in its truest sense, meant to be apolitical. There's no, there's not, I realize every board member has a political affiliation and they have philosophies about things that come to the board table inevitably. The thing that I appreciate about this, whether you, whether it aligns with Michigan's Department of Ed's stance or whether it aligns, as you reported, Tricia Robinson, the federal one, I put front of board members the copy of the federal nondiscrimination statement and then on the backside of it, MBE's nondiscrimination statement, by which we ironically just received an email today from the Michigan Department of Education that had this nondiscrimination statement on it from MBE. The thing that I appreciate about this committee's work relative to this statement, wherever you land, is it aligns with our strategic plan and the fact that we are thinking of, as you just mentioned, all students regardless of, in this case, regardless of their gender or their gender preference. So for what it's worth, I appreciate that the committee came up with that. It aligns with that.
And that really was one of our biggest things that we said over and over again. Our mission statement is every child, every day. We had a lot of conversations about how do we make sure that we're building a plan that reaches all of the children and that we're not using our food service and our house programs disparately. Every child is getting the benefit of it.
David, but putting political preferences aside, biologically, there's two genders. What you do to yourself is two genders. Whether you're male or you're female, outside of, I can do it with, yeah, it is right. And I'm gonna get to the discussion with you, but it is.
There's a lot that goes into it. I'll share stuff with you, it's really quite interesting. A friend of mine showed it to me. It had a lot to do with the expansion behind yodges chromosomes. And I'll leave it at that. There's a lot that's involved.
It may very well be, but I guess it doesn't change my opinion on the biology.
And that's absolutely fine. I like that you've come here and you're now afraid to share your opinion and that you raise these things and we have an opportunity to have these discussions. So for that, I do thank you.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
So Mark, are you questioning everything that was in brackets?
Yes.
So if we put a period after sex, I'm good with that.
Okay, so any other discussion, questions?
So I guess I'll ask this question because Mark raised his concern. What do we do with that?
I believe, sorry, I guess I would suggest that we vote tonight on the way it stands. And if it fails, then we, we can just change this.
I guess.
So Mark has the right to make a motion to change it.
That's my guess. I'd like to make the motion to remove that portion of the nondiscrimination statement.
I believe you would need a second.
Action items?
He can make a motion anytime he wants. We're not voting on the item yet.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Do you wanna add that in? Let's go ahead and vote on that.
We don't, we're not gonna vote on that until we get to the.
To action items?
Correct.
So we're just adding that in as like a pre to A?
When we get to A, we'll entertain this motion as to whether or not we want to amend that language. If the vote is to amend it, then we vote on the amended language. If that motion to amend it is voted down, then we vote on the standing language that you're reading there.
Okay. Thank you, Tricia.
You're welcome.
That brings us to public comment. One touch over. Okay, we have two public comments tonight. If you haven't been here for comment before, we allow three minutes. Jeff, would you like to tell?
Oh, yeah.
So I have Jessica Schrempf.
Hi.
Just for a point reference, when you're at like thirty seconds, I'll still, there's no logic between five and thirty.
I don't think I'll take over for both of you. I thought it was appropriate to comment tonight as the wellness policy was being put to motion. I wasn't sure if I should comment during the, when the presentation was up, but just to address all the board members, if you'd appropriate. I don't think I disagree with any of the changes to the wellness plan, but as I'm a first grader at Cinzur and a three-year-old at the ECC. And as my first grader has decided it's really cool to eat breakfast every day at Cinzur, I've just had some questions about some of the main options. So today, for example, the main option was chocolate doughnuts. And they're whole grain and lower sugar, but sometimes we know that can be misleading. And we're certainly not a family that, you know, doesn't let our kids have cake or cookies, but we're trying to teach them that those breakfast, lunch, dinner options should be energizing for your body. And so it's that fine line between the stress of parents of saying it's cool eating a cafeteria and doughnuts taste good and not wanting him to stress about that. He's a rule follower and trying to teach him that doughnuts probably are gonna make you tired in an hour whether they're whole grain or not. So I just wanted to bring that up as an observation, as a mom, as a parent, and on a night that you're talking about, well, I'll see.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
And next we have Mark, thanks.
A week ago, I received an email inviting my child to participate in a research study evaluating the implementation and impact of our restorative practices in our school. First, I'd like to ask, what exactly are restorative practices? This term may not be familiar to many parents, myself included, and I believe it's important that we understand what it means and how it's being applied to our schools. Second, since it is sponsored by the Michigan State, what is the school district gaining from student participation in this survey? How will the results be used and how do they connect to improving student learning? After reviewing the survey questions, I've noticed that they focus heavily on students' feelings about the school environment and behavior rather than on academic learning. For example, section two is titled, "Students' Perceptions of Fair Process and Reintegration Management of Shame." This raises questions about the survey's relevance and to the district's core educational goals. Is the district prioritizing school climate and behavior initiatives over academic achievement? I wanna know how this survey is gonna be used to increase our English, math, and reading directives since they've been declining. That's all I have. Thank you.
All right, that looks us to action items. I'm not gonna read that. Can I get a motion to approve? I wanna do that first. All right, I'm going back, sorry. Letter A, can I get a motion in support to approve tonight's assembly agenda? Motion for, any questions? All right, all in favor say aye. Aye, opposed, motion carries six zero.
Before we move on to that, I would just like to welcome back Mr. Haynes.
Yeah, welcome back. I was gonna say. Really happy to see your name on there. You can always come home again, you know.
He leaves the line on for you.
Right. Won't tell six.
Yeah.
It's a little bit better.
We're upgrading.
All right, letter B. Can I get a motion? Oh no, we've had a motion. We've had, we have a motion on the table from Member Robinson, supported by Member Gustinus, to amend our revisions to the wellness policy. As pointed out by Member Robinson, to remove the pregnancies. Any questions on that, since I spoke that so clearly in order to discuss?
I think one thing I'd like to just point out is, as someone who's historically, like, my name is Cory. I'm constantly misgendered on paper, if you will, my whole life. And just being a, just being a girl and growing up as a woman, just having imbalance of sometimes opportunities outside of your point, Mark. I think that it is important to not discriminate whether we're just talking about boys versus girls or men versus women. And so sometimes that gets left out of that discussion. If you do feel that there is only two genders, I also don't want those two genders to be discriminated against. And so taking that out also will remove that ability for, you know, pointing to a policy like this if someone does feel like they've been treated unfairly. And so I know that we always kind of tend to lean towards the more politically controversial meaning of gender and identity, but just from straight, man versus woman, boy versus girl, the two genders that you're talking about, I do wanna just point out that it's important to recognize that discrimination happens there. And so I would not want that to be left out of the conversation.
Just to clarify, though, your, your, your edit doesn't take out gender.
Right.
It's not right after gender.
No, you said sex. Gender identity.
Everything beyond sex is out. So it already includes sex, whether you're male or female. Or whether you're, if I was a female, Cory, or a male, Cory, that would seem to fall under. Sure, nature of sex would put it out.
Well, it depends on if, if my gender identity matches up with somebody else's idea of what, I'm a woman, that's how I identify, maybe to you, whether it be visually or on paper, you might not think that and that might be a part of a discriminatory practice. I'm just saying that there is space for that even in the way that you're, even in the way that you mean. So I, as someone who has shown up to job interviews and they thought I was a guy, or, and you know what, that benefited me because clearly they gave me the interview. But I've literally had people say to my face as a hiring manager, I thought you were going to be a man when you showed up today. And so I'm just saying that my gender identity as a woman might not match what your perception of my gender is and therefore there could be some discrimination there.
So my question would be, including sex and avoiding debate of how many there are, I don't think that's what this is about. What do we add by adding gender? I'm not clear on that part. What do we, what is?
What we add is there's so much.
Just explain it so I understand it. If I can't, if we can't explain it, then I can't support it.
Yep, no, I will.
Gotcha. I'm sorry, I just wanted.
What you get is when you talk about sex to Mark's point, you've got biologically male, biologically female, and I'm using those terms very loosely because we all know there's things that involve besides just your X and Y chromosomes, you start to get involved in hormones and different conditions. But when you add a gender identity, you may be, and again, I'm gonna keep it super simple. You say you're biologically a male, but you identify as a female. By keeping that gender identity in there, it prevents anyone from discriminating against that person.
So if I had to adjust the word sex in there, it doesn't affect the fact?
That would say, I can't discriminate against you because you're a man That would say, "I can't discriminate against you because you're a man or because you're a woman." We're saying, "I can't discriminate against a man that identifies as a woman" because we know that those children get treated differently than a, a biological, let's just, I'm keeping the example simple, biological male that identifies as a male.
So the word sex is a feminine term?
Yes.
It's not including whatever else? To be clear, I don't want to discriminate against anybody, I don't care what you want, but I just wanted to make sure I understand what you're saying.
And that, I think that you've kind of hit the nail on the head with my point. Whether I agree with gender identities or not, there are children that feel that way. And I don't want them to be discriminated against. Whether I agree with their take, their position, their science, whatever we call it, I don't know. I don't have the answers. I just want a plan in place that they can be fed and healthy and cared for and they're not treated differently than other children because our policy is every child at every day. Policy, mission, statement, mission, okay, yeah.
And the policy should reflect our mission, our organization.
That was, that was the direction that we were going in when we, when we chose this variation.
Yeah, I agree with you. I think including more rather than including the bare minimum just protects more kids than we do they.
That was really well said. Because it's all around, I can set it very clearly. Thank you.
Okay, any more discussion or are we going to vote? Again, we're voting on the decision. What if? No.
Yes.
Yes. The amended, changed, taking out that in.
To amend it. You're, you're voting to amend it and then if that, this is going to tell me.
Right, that's what it is.
Then you vote on the amended.
Correct.
So this vote is simply to amend.
To amend.
The proposed policy.
Okay, everyone clear on that?
We're talking about just his suggestion.
Just to change it.
Yeah.
So if you don't want to change it, you are probably not in favor of voting to change it. Right? All right, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Motion fails one, four. Okay. Oh, there are six. I apparently get that intervention.
Now the bat fails.
Now the bat failed, we go, we can go ahead and vote. All right.
The unmodified.
Yes. Can I get a motion?
Motion.
Thank you. All right, we have motion and support to approve the revisions as previously stated, um, as recommended by the District Wellness Committee. Any questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries five, one. Okay. Now moving on to letter C. See the motion in support to approve the recommended network electronics and UPS replacement using one hundred ninety-three thousand fifty-seven dollars and thirty cents from the twenty-twenty bond funds, three hundred forty-six thousand eight hundred ninety dollars and thirty-one cents.
Motion.
Porced. Okay, any questions on that? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any questions?
Do we have a backup? Is anybody else going?
I am planning to go Friday.
No, no.
But I know, but as a backup.
It's okay, I'm just asking if we have any options.
Just seeing if anybody else.
Delegate announcement.
Right.
We just have a delegate that will be.
Yeah. I think she is planning on going, but if something happens, I could probably change my schedule.
Do you want to, we have to submit this demand speed, you want us to submit the alternate?
Is it just a nutshell?
If there is, yeah. No problem.
So let's go ahead and vote on that. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries six zero. Future items for consideration, we do have all of our meetings listed. That leads us to go around. Mr. Law, would you like to say anything tonight?
I'm also.
Corporal Scott. June?
I just, uh, in the week that you probably noticed that I added one more event that you could add to your calendar if your schedule allows. That's a KIA SB dinner meeting, the first one of the year. Um, that will be, Dan Dean will be scooping at that, uh, about as the current state of affairs with the budget process at the state level. Um, so, um, and will be, the KIA SB will be recognized as their education advocate of the year, uh, going to, um, Ron Keeler, who is retired as the most recent KIA SB superintendent. So I printed it off, I didn't bring it in, so I apologize, I don't have that day committed to memory, but there's time to, uh, because it's several weeks down the road, I think, uh, we have, uh, you know, a lot of time to ours, maybe I'll highlight that again in my.
Wednesday at October fifteenth.
Thank you.
At Watermark, yeah.
Mine's October fifteenth at Watermark. Country Club is according to the president's, and we have until first part of October for ours.
Perfect. Is this a new thing that you guys are using, like Watermark now?
No, we, it seems like the second time. This is the second time, yeah. We've tried to do like two, one or two at the ISB and then trying to do something else just to drum up maybe more interest.
I miss the old, um, the, um, marketplace.
I asked about that and that was my suggestion, but parking in your community and out was an issue.
Really?
People were, yeah, but then a lot of people complained about how long it took to get under the look. So, you know, we chose Watermark again because completely centrally located, um, that, you know, all the school districts can, it's really not far from the ISB, so.
Where is it?
It's on Caskey though. So pretty central for most districts, I think.
Um, the other item, uh, you can anticipate, we'll talk about more, we may talk about more in October, um, depending on what is determined at the, at the state level, um, in regard to, let me talk about the wellness policy tonight, you can get Megan Johnson, our director of food and official services here for that. It is going to be about, uh, what do we do as a school district if the state does not include in its budget free, uh, meals for all students? Um, there's, you know, some debates in Lansing, uh, among the legislators about whether or not the state should be responsible or, or is going to be responsible making up that difference based on what we get from the, um, federal government. And so you may notice that some districts have taken a pretty hard line on this already and have come out and said to their community, "As of October first," uh, because there's some uncertainty with the budget, uh, continuing October first, any student who doesn't qualify for free to use lunch as defined by the federal government in completion of the application will have to be in paying for and you can start putting money in your child's account as of now kind of thing. Um, I, and certainly that's an approach that districts can take. Um, I would like the board to entertain the conversation on October about where we go, knowing that if it is not included without any other policy in place or a vote from the board in place, that the district will carry out the clause associated through October. Uh, and then the board can debate whether or not they should move beyond October if the state does not include.
What's the significance? Help me understand October, that's.
Well, if you start at October first and you start a process and then the, the, the state approves it after that, we're undoing what's already been, you know, changed, if you will. Um, I, I believe that we give our legislators an opportunity to decide whether or not they're going to use state funds to do that and then we respond accordingly, um, with a month, you know, a month of transition, if you will.
Can I ask, can I ask, well, maybe this is for a different meeting, but, you know, we just started even the after-school, then for the high schoolers, are we talking about? I mean, that was all on, we're not giving any reimbursement state for half, maybe just breakfast lunch.
That is, um, there's an opportunity for reimbursement, but I don't think to extend it. They were, yeah, we're using that.
So we would be able, you know, are we going to be able to find breakfast, lunch, candles, after-school, evening?
I would come to you with your, yours, here are the facts associated with it. Here are the costs that, based on our anticipated free, reduced lunch count and the financial implications of doing that long-term.
So this is something we would have to address in the October meeting?
I believe so, and I believe you should address it because it was not captured in the current budget that we have. There are some assumptions, and we made a lot of assumptions in the budget, one of which is, uh, that the district, uh, you know, the, the goals that we changed relatively, we wouldn't be going back to what we used to do. Whether it was a good assumption or not, that, that we would maintain this actual.
So what we would be addressing, addressing in October is in the event that they choose not to fund it, our position and going forward, we will do with X.
Correct.
Okay.
And that would be on a year-to-year basis, budget kind of.
Correct, yeah, absolutely.
Well, we're all on board, maybe. All I'm worried about is talking about it for sure, but, um, if possible, I love like when you bring your data, not only just the cost involved, but also looking at like the percentage of students that utilize it, right? We only get reimbursed by the meals actually, how, yeah, what percentage of each, um, grade level or school building level are utilizing it and that would be helpful.
Yeah, we'll bring it, we'll bring it by, a lot of data for, for your concern. That's all.
Okay. Still have anything? Tracy?
Um, thank you for the follow-up on the last public comment question.
Sure.
That was helpful. The, um, one of the questions, the two questions that we received tonight, um, I'm hoping, I don't know if Ms. Trentney left something for a follow-up contact. So I'm guessing you put her in touch with Megan.
Yep.
That, another, that was another thing that we talked about, um, pretty extensively as part of that Wellness Committee, is what, what foods are we allowed to serve in the guidelines? And, um, I think Megan does a pretty solid job of distinguishing what happens in the meals versus what can be done as celebrations. And it's, it's a hard line to balance, what kids can bring in. I saw recently that she's added, um, staff purchasing meals and, um, that she's looking to do things where you can purchase, where families can purchase from her for celebrations for the classroom, which I thought, yeah, if one of my kids were in school, I would love that. Because I always remember getting that the night before, "Mom, I need to bring cupcakes." So, um, and then the second one that, um, Mark Day takes questions today about the restorative practices, is that targeted for follow-up?
Yeah, okay.
Um, that was, that was an interesting question. I was glad to hear that, um, that we're doing that. Um, I, I'm a big supporter of restorative practices. I think that they really help our kids, um, deal with their emotions. And while sometimes we say there's a line between the emotional and the, um, academic, those, they could be more hand in hand. If you're not in the right frame of mind and you can't deal with your emotions properly, you're not in a position to be an open vessel to what's coming at you academically. So, um, thank you for, for taking care of that. And that's all I got.
All right, James, you know?
I have one thing that I brought up today. Um, we are starting the Rotary Interact at our high school this year. So I'm ready with things about the fortune, so we started, um, our, um, the person that's helping us is Ms. Lee, I mean, Ms. Lee Ross. She's helping us with it, so that'll be fun. We're hoping that this year is a good benchmark and that we can be put out in the next year the Rotary more into all of our schools. So there'll be a lot of, of volunteer work going on.
Please. Is that the main focus of the Rotary group is finding ways to give back to the community?
That leadership, um, and, um, community involvement.
And I've got, is it tied to one of the local chapters? Is it the zone chapter?
Yes, that's my guess.
Oh, I was looking over that way.
Are you guys any scholarship opportunities, like advisory?
We're meeting for advisory, um, every other year.
Okay.
Yes, and our plan is to do, um, one thing of the community, so either in Walker or Campbell, and then we'll do something for, whether it's like, you know, collecting money for something and then you get the Rotary should do it out somewhere.
That's great. Thank you.
Well, I'll say, if you aren't a member of the Dr. Rappids of Rotary, so if you ever want to comment or guess, would you say anything about, be able to, how do you be able to see this couple of different chapters?
Great, thank you.
Yeah. Great. Um, the only other thing I have is if anyone is interested in doing the NSBA trip to DC, I do have the link to the scholarship applications that you can fill out for, um, uh, KIA SB scholarships, so anyone wants that link, they can send it out.
So I'm at, no, just an opportunity for us to kind of talk to the group. We always, every year, we set a budget for training development for the board. And I believe we typically say it's X dollars per member. And I don't, I don't think we're actively using it all. Um, I think it's passed a couple of years, and Julie over there probably knows more about it than I do, that we may have left some money on the table, which I'm not saying is a bad thing.
Sure.
Um, but I do think we as a board should decide. I know we've handled it differently a few times. We've said so-and-so can give their money to so-and-so. Um, we talked about what happens if the money's left over. I think we should take some time and maybe throw it on our agenda for next month to say this is what our, our norm and our procedure is and how we're going to handle it so we don't find ourselves in that position where we're trying to put the rules on the line and define it, something like that, you know?
Sounds good. Definitely discuss that.
Thank you.
All right, I don't have anything else, so meeting is adjourned at seven oh seven. Thank you.